Everyone and welcome to the April 16, 2019, meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Pat?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Here.
Kanter?
Present.
Next on our agenda, we have our approval of minutes for April 2nd, 2019, and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd.
2nd. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Kanter for approval of the April 2nd minutes. Ms. Ogg, please call the roll.
Pat?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation from Dr. Tom Edwards. He's the executive director of Restore Whitehall. And sir, if you'll please come up and get us going here.
Hi, Tom.
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I also have five minutes to give you a special presentation on Restore Whitehall, an update of our progress and what we've been doing. So I will endeavor to get this done within four minutes and take 60 seconds for questions. This year, we are entering the second phase of our program to dive deeper into the issues of the families that we serve. We are rebranding ourselves as the Family Success Program. You'll hear more about that throughout the slides. Second slide just gives our primary connecting points between Franklin County, the Commissioners, and the city of Whitehall. I'm going to read a couple of things to you to summarize our program. Restore Whitehall is a community initiative dedicated to helping Tannith eligible families residing in the city of Whitehall bear the capacity to become holistically successful in the arenas of family unity, educational attainment, financial security, and career We empower families, the families we serve, by analyzing their strengths and needs and by shaping and sharpening their mindsets, values, and behaviors. We do so through a holistic family success process. So it's a lot of words. What we basically are doing this year, we're embarking upon an assessment model that will assess the families in not only those four areas that mentioned before, but also including housing and health and wellness. The process flows like this. When a family comes into our system, we assess their strengths. The assessment consists of 86 questions. They can do it online. Once we do the assessment, we can benchmark them against other families within the city of Whitehall. And also from this assessment, we can assess what type of plan they should engage in, which areas they are strong in or weak in. And at the end of the year, we'll be able to report from that assessment. So you'll be able to see a report on the families that actually came in from, with a pre-assessment, to a mid-program assessment, and then a post-assessment. The goal is for them to no longer need our program. So once they reach that threshold of non-Tannith eligibility, which is reached by income, once you remove yourself from that threshold, you can be removed from the program because you're no longer qualified, or when you make enough progress on your own, you can choose to opt out and discharge your own path. So we go from the assessment to the plan. We have enrichment opportunities from workforce development to parenting training to financial literacy. Each family is assessed based upon their unique imprint. And so it's not one size fits all. Every family has their own plan, their own assessment. It goes from there to, we encourage every family to build a support team. We understand that poverty and success is built by the support of others. And so we look for natural support. We encourage everybody to become part of something in the community, be it a club, be it a religious organization, be it the PTA, the YMCA. Get to know people, because many times we found that families that are in need are insulated. They don't know anyone, they don't connect with anyone. We have a young lady who wants to start an autism daycare, but she has no family connection. She cannot break away from her youngest child to work full-time, and she has no one in her life. We have a young lady who's deaf, and she has no one in the deaf community within the city of Whitehall that connects to her. So we're helping her to establish a community. We helped her get an interpreter so that she can connect and start her pathway towards success. And then finally, they transition out. They have a plan. The plan goes with them. They create the plan, they work the plan. We help them to do it, but they actually do all the heavy lifting themselves. And so the four main areas that we work on is the unity, the educational attainment. We have a program with schools in the city of Whitehall that focuses on all the schools, elementary, middle, and high school, but we're working with principals' methods to create a student success process. We're starting this pilot after spring break to work with the high school students to have an after-school educational plan. Whether you go into college, military, or into a career, what are you doing as a freshman to progress towards having a job or having financial security and independence in the future? Career advancement, we are meeting with families, actually tonight, doing mock interviews and our workforce development down at the building. And then we're going to do a special session on May 4th with a roundtable of families to come in to cap off that program. And then finally, financial security, helping them to improve their credit scores, understanding banking, investments, and so forth. So some highlights, last year, we were able to touch 250 Tannith eligible neighbors. We call our clients neighbors. We had 110 head of household interviews. 60 students received tutoring support. 20 parents completed the parenting training last year, and then we started the Soapbox Derby STEM program with the YMCA last summer, was a really good collaboration. This year, it's expanded, and you'll see some of the pictures. If you saw the news article, you'll see how that's expanding. We have four teams that are competing in the regional race with the big cars on May the 11th, I believe. And so we're actually in the old Yearling Cafe. That's how the cafe looked before we went inside the cafe. That does not give you the aroma that was actually there, so you can't really smell. But it did smell like an old cafe that had been popped up for maybe six or seven months. That's the way it looks now. Here's some of our students who received tutoring at Dr. Nagus Educational Center. Those kids are doing really well in school. We have currently a grant with the Whitehall Bexley Rotary Club, and we have students starting in that grant process, 11 more students on April the 29th. And we're subsidizing 70%, and they're paying the other 30%. This was from last year's Soapbox Derby STEM program that was held over at the elementary on the...
K Elementary.
K Elementary. And here's some pictures from over at Priority Design a few weeks ago. Paul and Linda Calata actually donated, along with Waschischtrom and several Eddies and several others, to actually pay for the cars for the kids too, and they built them inside of Priority Design with their engineers and their staff. And so the kids learn wind resistance on, they create this whole model. They're going to paint the cars soon. And if you would like to attend on maybe 11th, they have the regional race. They're going to test drive on that date, and then they'll take them up to Akron a few weeks later. So it's going to be great. And this program is designed to teach them STEM, science, technology, education, mathematics. And we have as many girls as boys there. Typically, the young ladies win the races locally because they're more disciplined. When you're racing a Soapbox Derby car, you can't really move. You have to stay focused, and you steer it from the inside. So it takes a lot of discipline and practice to do it. So I think with Paul and Linda's team helping them, I think we're going to have some champions. Typically, Pickering High wins the local races. I think that Whitehall will give them a run for their money.
I think so, too.
Yes. We had a property litigation round. We recognized the lady in the center to the left. It was a really good conversation that was sponsored by Franklin County Job and Family Services. The goal was to understand from a community perspective, what class poverty in this community. And we got a lot of good feedback in that session. We had a call section of government officials. We had families, business owners in that conversation. We thought it would be good to get the kids' perspective, so we actually duplicated that program with the high school. We actually asked the kids, and what we found was, they had a much deeper level of understanding than we thought they had, but also their answers to really poverty and their situation. It went beyond what even the adults did. And so now we have a council in the school that's part of that workforce development success process that meets to brainstorm ideas around how can they, in their generation, change Whitehall for the future. Some of our parenting trainees, we had a parenting trainer seminar last year where we trained 26 individuals to volunteer to train parents in the community. So we have trainees. We just graduated a class last, two weeks ago, and had 15 attendees. We're doing two classes, starting in May, a daytime class and an evening class. And our final quote comes from one of our graduates, Cynthia Sloan. She has a master's degree. She's in poverty because she's a victim of divorce. She has six kids. Husband left her, and then she adopted two other children from a brother who's incarcerated. And so she's now beginning to pull herself out of this cycle of poverty that she just unfortunately found herself in. Ms. Sloan said this, "I never got the opportunity to tell you how thankful I am for being able to participate in the Parenting Partners class. I learned so much about myself, and more importantly, about how my communication and engagement with my children, their educators, and community really matters. I'm excited to share with you how all of my children have improved grades, behavior, and self-esteem. When I was a student in the class, it really felt like a safe place to share my successes and failures in parenting, and my dreams and aspirations for myself and my family. Since taking the class, I've been able to serve at Tannith Row PTA, take time to engage my children as individuals, reduce arguments, work better together as a team, and improve the outlook for my family. I commend you for your efforts. Keep up the good work, warm regards." She's also started her own consulting firm to help people do resumes, start businesses. She's taken on clients. She's able to work around her children's schedule. And so you'll see her a lot. She may become a chamber member pretty soon as her business begins to develop. And so hopefully, it didn't go too far over the five minutes, but that's the presentation and update. And we'll be sending Joe a PDF narrative of the progress also for you all to peruse.
That's amazing.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
I have a question or two.
Oh, yes, yes.
We're trying to give you some more time here.
You said 60 seconds, right?
Yes, yes. I thought I went over, so yes.
Okay, that's all right. First of all, congratulations for the success of your program. Secondly, how long does it take families to get through the process that you guys have set out?
The process, it's self-paced. So we're thinking 18 months to three years to get to that place of breaking the cycle. I met with five families this morning who are interested in going through the entire holistic process. So we're moving them from just taking à la carte programs, a parenting class, a workforce development class, to diving deeper into their situation. And so as I expressed to them, it's up to you when you opt out. When you think that you have the momentum going, you can get out of this process. We're not here to keep you dependent upon us, but our goal is to get them there. We know that poverty can be broken in one generation, it can be broken simply by improving your career, asking to get a better job. And so our goal is to find quick fixes, to help them to get a better job. There are a lot of good paying jobs in Whitehall that many Whitehall citizens don't qualify for, so we can create those connections. We have a young man now who has, he's unemployed, but he has HVAC training. And so we have a connection to one of the local air conditioning companies that need qualified HVAC people. He may be out of the program really soon because he just needs the opportunity to work. And so being from Ethiopia, he didn't really have the connections, didn't know the individuals. We knew someone, we got some connections, and so he's going to be going through the interview process. And so it could be a matter of only a few weeks with us, or it can be up to three years. We have one young lady who dropped out of high school in ninth grade. And so she's starting, we're helping her get her high school diploma. She wants to get two years in education so that she can take the GED. She needs everything. She may be that person that takes three years because she has such a deficit. So it just depends on the family, the person. Within the fourth year and talking to the county, our goal is to do a peer evaluation of the program, to verify the data, to measure it, to make sure that our theses and hypotheses are correct, and that the process can be replicated elsewhere. So this is an incubator and a pilot for this community, but we're trying to, in real time, get people to move at their own pace, as quick as possible, but again, to make sure that we permanently get them out of poverty.
Okay. Once they transition out of the program, do you guys stay in touch with them?
They can. We encourage families, even after they've completed a class, to come back and teach others. And so the goal is to pay it forward, and pay it forward as soon as possible. So it's not just you get yours and you leave, but you get yours and stay connected. Build a community. We see ourselves as a community asset, so we're trying to get them to see themselves as being citizens of Whitehall so that they can become neighbors to their neighbors. And so Cynthia, she's actually from her class of individuals. She's working with all the ladies that went to the class with her to help them open their resumes and work on their financial goals and aspirations.
So with that, do you look or encourage them to move from, if there's renters, to move from renting to homeownership?
Absolutely. And so part of the process is, we know that we have those who are moving out of the houses along Hamilton Road. And so we have been able to help with some of the other renters to get some of those families into homes. So part of the deal is, you come into the program, you submit to parenting classes and other training. We can help by just using our name to get you into the door to get another housing situation. We're trying to develop more relationships with local realtors and homeowners so that we can make that transition. Part of the class is helping them in the financial literacy piece. How do you buy a home? How do you maintain the credit score? How do you go about that whole process of getting a mortgage? So the goal is to get them holistically healthy, because as long as they're renting, they're not building equity. They're basically investing in someone else. You can start there, and you can move on to another progress, to another level. And some of the people I talked to today were just clueless about that process because, again, coming from their environment, that was never the situation. Families, poverty was handed down by generation. Deeds and titles were not part of the norm of that culture. And so part of this acculturation for those who have been here for years, just breaking that cycle of, we've always rented. We never became a homeowner.
Once you guys, like, I know this is incubator, but once you guys benchmark, measure, and assess, I would like to see some data regarding the success of the different people who've gone to your program, gone through the program, and have gone on to careers, homeownership, that sort of thing. That would be really great.
Absolutely.
Great job.
I have a question. So where do you get most of your referrals from? Are they walk-ins? Are they through the school?
Joe was very helpful. Joe took us everywhere.
Okay.
I'm not from Whitehall, but I'm from close to Whitehall. And so I knew a lot about the community. So Joe took us into the chamber meetings. So within the chamber meetings, we met everyone. We passed out business cards. And so we got to just meet, greet, talk, and others who are doing similar work. The Y has been very helpful in our partnership with you all, but also the schools. The schools have been a really big support system of us. They always set up tables at different events. We go in, and that's how we were able to meet 224 people last year. Now, of those 224, some, they go dormant. They take a class, they go dormant. They become part of that role of individuals. We do get walk-ins. We get some very interesting walk-ins. And so we have a very good relationship with the police department now. They call us a lot. Also, through Attorney Gibson's office, we now, through the Victims Program, we're getting a pipeline of folks who are coming in from that process. So Loretta Lacy, she has me on speed dial. She calls me several times a week with individuals who go through mayor's court, they needed to take a class on parenting, or to get some other type of resource. They come into the program. It's a safe place, so we get a variety of people, but a lot, just those community connections. We hit the streets, we talk to folks. I don't think that, there's not a street on Whitehall that we have not gone to. We don't do door-to-door canvassing, but we make a lot of connections. And then the food truck festival is a really good event. Last year, we had a table on the corner by the Children's Hospital. And for Children's Hospital, we have a program that's starting in a few weeks, Healthy Eating. And so part of the process is, you have to be Tannith eligible. We'll supply space in our building. That program's going to move to the Y, I believe, in the fall. And so it's going to start summer, spring, summer with us, move to the Y, and we get 20 more families that's in it to the program.
How is the best way to refer a family to you?
I don't have the numbers only, but you can go to our website. There's contact information, restorewhitehall.org. And you can just call the number, send them down to 678 South Yearling Road. It's hard to miss the building, just tell them it's across from the high school. And people come in. They come in all day long. They knock on the door. We had a family that's been sitting watching the building for a couple of years, for a year now, wondering what we were, walked in a few days ago, and just to get information. They didn't qualify, but they decided to go out and tell others about the program.
Thank you.
Well, I want to say one...
Yes, sir.
How would one volunteer?
Oh, same way. Website, call us, volunteer. We use volunteers in so many ways, facilitating the classes. We're looking to have volunteers who have financial acumen to help teach.
I'm a real estate broker, but I'm also a market researcher and strategist, financial background.
Okay. So we've used the FDIC curriculum for adult financial literacy. And so it's free. It's what we're going to use. So we're looking at several facilitators to help do that.
We'll get in touch.
Absolutely. Not in business, but I give you one, so you can call me.
I forgot mine's.
Yes. Anyone else?
Yes, I just want to, I just have a comment. It's great to see that your organization is having such good success, working with other businesses, with businesses in the community, and also having the opportunity to work with members of the administration as far as, you know, helping people out and stuff. That is really, and to me, that's what a community is about. It's everybody pitching in together, you know, where we can all help each other out wherever we can. And I want to say one thing about the paying it forward. I like to call that legacy. That's about putting your hand on somebody's shoulder and saying, "I'm going to make a difference in this person's life because somebody did that for me." And that is really what that is, and I think that's great.
Just one more thing. One thing before you, two years ago, we were afraid whether or not we would resonate and connect with folks. But Whitehall is the perfect place to start this. This is an intact community, and other communities around central Ohio don't have that sense of integrity. And so we were able to make those connections rather quickly. And so now we're looking to go deeper. We grew up, but we need to grow deeper now to really have a permanent impact on the families that we serve. And thank you all for supporting us.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate your presentation this evening.
And I have another meeting to get to.
Well, we don't want to take up too much of your time here now.
No, I'll give you a second.
Okay. All right. So this brings us to our first opportunity for poll public. Now, I do see some people out here that have some orange shirts on that say "Science Festival", so while maybe you have some presentation or something, but look, come on up, tell us about your t-shirts. What do you got going?
So, well, thank you, city council members here for the city of Whitehall. Thank you Mayor Maggard for allowing me to be here.
On Coastide, I didn't see that part. I saw the Science Festival.
So my name is Stephen White. I am the vice president of Strategic Initiatives at Coastide, Center of Science and Industry, your science center. And I'm here today to thank you, to thank the city of Whitehall for its partnership. One of the vision and mission of Coastide is to engage, inspire, and transform lives and communities by being the best partner in science, technology, and industry learning. And that critical partnership piece is very important. And I'm here again to thank the city of Whitehall for its partnership around the Coastide Science Festival. So in about two weeks, 13 hours, two minutes, 13 seconds, we're going to be embarking together on one of the largest science and technology events in Ohio history. The Coastide Science Festival will run from May 1st through the 4th, and it will be essentially free events all throughout Franklin County with the purpose and the goal to expose people to science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, where they live, where they learn, and where they lounge. And we're going to do it for free, and we're going to do it because we recognize that if you can deliver these opportunities to our community in a way that makes them comfortable around science and technology and math, then that positions them to grow for the future around a diverse STEM workforce that we need, not only here in Whitehall, but for the community. And so we're honored to say that for the inaugural year 2019, we've partnered with 12 different communities, including Whitehall. So those first three days, running from May 1st through the 3rd, will feature over 110 distinct events throughout Franklin County that will be at community centers, it will be at parks, it will be at restaurants, it will be at a variety of different places where the public can engage in STEM activities, regardless of all ages, from age 1 to 100. And then the final day, we call the Big Science Celebration. That's where we shut down all the roads around Coastide, and we're going to have 10-by-10 booths with hands-on demonstrations that the public can engage in, from businesses to educators, to community colleges, career technical schools, universities. They'll all be able to experience that for free. Over 140 different distinct booths that will be at the Big Science Celebration on that Saturday event, that May 4th event. And our big official partner for the Science Festival is NASA. So for the first time in Ohio history, all 10 NASA centers will be coming together to engage the public around aerospace and aviation, from the wheels that go on the rovers to all kinds of cool stuff for the Science Festival. And for Whitehall in particular, for those first three days, we have a number of activities that are going to be happening in the Whitehall community, including, I heard, Priority Design earlier. Well, that's going to be one of the events. Priority Design is going to open their doors and allow the public to come in and see the amazing work that they're doing so they can be a scientist for a day. We're going to be at the library, be a scientist with the Whitehall branch, and be a rocket scientist with Chief Moore, where he's going to be teaching the public all about rockets and all that fun stuff. And then finally, we're going to have a citywide star party at the Whitehall Community Park, where we're going to deliver astronomers and telescopes, where the public can engage for free and look up at the stars and learn about space. We're going to deliver free programs to schools in Whitehall, including a Coastide on Wheels program and an interactive video conference where they can talk to an astronaut, where they can talk to Jenny from Jenny's Ice Cream about the science of ice cream. And we're doing all of that thanks in part because of your leadership, because of the leadership of Mayor Maggard. We want to also thank the community member Shannon Sorrell for her incredible work that she's been able to partner on this. And we want to thank you for allowing us to be here. You know, we're expecting to impact over 50,000 individuals. We're hoping to get a bunch of folks from Whitehall to engage as well. We're going to come back to you after the Science Festival is over and give you a report. I heard the importance of measurements, right? That's really critical. So we'll be back to take about all the people we impacted. But before I leave here today, Kara and I have a... Kara is an intern at Coastide. Do you want to say what school you're with?
I'm with Ohio State, John Smith College.
All focus on public policy. And you all are Coastide Science Festival t-shirts here for you all. So thank you again for everything that you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to pass these out.
Do you have any flyers of the stuff happening around here?
I sure do, absolutely. Yeah, we have some here that we'll leave. And we have folders for you here, which has an overview of all the Whitehall events as well as information on the Science Festival.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to come up under poll public?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much.
I forgot to mention one thing. The grand marshal for the Coastide Science Festival is going to be your own Chief Moore. We're going to be lifting up Chief Moore as an example to the community because of his tireless efforts to engage the public around his rocket, his training people on rockets. He's going to be one of the official grand marshals for the Science Festival. So we highlight that for the community.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on now with our standing committee reports.[1762.12]
Oh, I forgot to mention one thing. The grand marshal for the COSI Science Festival is going to be your own Chief Moore. We're going to be lifting up Chief Moore as an example to the community because of his tireless efforts to engage the public around his rocket, his training people in rockets. He's going to be one of the, he's going to be one of the official grand marshals for the Science Festival. So we highly ask for your community.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now with our standing committee reports. We'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday, we discussed several ordinances and resolutions, and I think several of them will be introduced tonight, and we will meet again next Tuesday, the 23rd, and our minutes are on file, and I have reviewed them, and Julie's done a very good job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President, Community and Elder Advocacy, Matt. We have no pending legislation, we will meet again next week in the back at 6:30. Thank you.
All righty. Now we'll hear from Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week, we've got a couple of little something-somethings on the agenda this evening, and we'll meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All righty, thank you, sir. Well, let's hear what's happening in economic development from Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, and our minutes are on file, and will meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30, and we have up for consideration with the public hearing ordinance 38-2019 for this evening.
All righty, thank you, sir. Well, what good news do we have from Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday, our notes are on file, we have no pending drafts or legislation, we will meet next Tuesday after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you, Ms. Heck. How about Public Safety? How are we doing there?
I think we're doing great.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairperson Con.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
I want to make sure-
Public Safety met last week, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week, on Tuesday, sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Well, now we come to Parks and Recreation, that had a very big weekend here the last couple of days. Mr. Kaner, Chairperson Kaner, what can you tell us from Parks and Rec?
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week, our minutes are on file this past weekend. Both big parks here in Whitehall are very, very busy, planting the trees, we had the Easter recon, we did some work at the senior center, so we're going pretty good. It's kickoff to the summer, it's going to be very, very busy. We'll meet again next week in the back after 6:30 probably.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, those are all our standing committee reports. We'll move on now to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our Mayor, Ms. Kim, Mayor.
I don't have any official report this evening, but I would like to say that when I brought the idea from COSI about the Science Festival to my administrative staff, Chief Moore, he said, "Well, I kind of know a little bit about rockets." And we went, "Oh," because we were like going, "Uh, we don't know what we can do." And he just stepped out, and, you know, he has a talent. He taught his Boy Scout troops about rockets, and that's a hobby of his, and so I want to say thank you, Chief Moore. You saved Whitehall for the Science Festival. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next, we have our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. The official report from the City Attorney's Office today, I had the opportunity to speak with our representative from the Columbus Urban League that helps facilitate our plea agreement program through the City of Whitehall Mayor's Court. And just for a reminder, one of the things that the City of Whitehall is doing in our Mayor's Court on Tuesday, we have a plea agreement program that targets individuals on two levels, job readiness and placement, as well as low-level drug offense, drug and alcohol offenses, and to the extent that we can divert these individuals and these defendants in a way that provides positive outcome for their life, we do so. And so today, I learned from our representative that we've ended up diverting over 500 individuals since this program has been facilitated in Whitehall Mayor's Court. And so that the public understands, in our city, as inspired by our mayor, being the City of Opportunity, you get two things when you come to our Mayor's Court. You have the opportunity to be accountable for your crime, but then you also have the opportunity to be diverted in this special way, and I have such a wonderful, I'm so excited to tell about this story, I'm trying to hold it back because it's such a cool thing that happened in the City of Whitehall. And this is one individual, and I'll withhold his name until I get his permission to do so, but this young man was 25 years old when he came through our Mayor's Court. He was stopped through the bright lights of our Whitehall Police Department. He thought in that instance that his life was obviously going to be in peril because of the crime that he committed and the crime that he was caught doing in the City of Whitehall. Well, as an opportunity presented itself, we were able to review this file and discover that this young man's situation was related to economic circumstances. So as a result of facilitating that discussion with him, as well as a result of facilitating that discussion with the Urban League, we were able to get him job readiness training, where he received a temporary job with the Columbus Urban League. Well, as a result of getting in that temporary job, he learned, wait a second, I have a skill, and I'm learning something that I never thought I would learn before. So he parlayed that opportunity into another opportunity to take a temporary job to get a permanent job, where his income went, it increased significantly, from $10 an hour to over $18 an hour. Well, as a result of that, he comes back to us, he did everything we asked him to do, we dismissed the case. So we're done with, he's done with Whitehall's obligation, but he decides, wait a second, Columbus Urban League, you can also provide me with credit counseling? Things that I had not even dreamed that he would even take advantage of. Well, as a result of the credit counseling, this young 25-year-old man, whose age went from 26 during this time period, went from a very low credit score to over a 780 credit score, and today, this is why I'm reporting it, he closed on his very first house at 26. And so that opportunity, one that he thought was to be accountable for his crime, turned into an opportunity and a success story that has changed this young man's life. And for that, I'm just grateful that we get the opportunity to serve the public in the way that we get the opportunity to do private partnerships with organizations like the Urban League, and I'm just excited that we are the City of Opportunity despite whatever reports come out that may say otherwise. We are doing a great job in the City of Whitehall, and I thank you, council, I thank you, Mayor, for believing in this program, and I look forward to its continuance.
All right, well, thank you. All right, next we have, I'm sure he's a little worse for wear maybe, but our City Auditor, Mr. Dan Miller, who probably had a very big day Monday.
Well, it was a, it was a, definitely a full day of work. Laid the tax days over, getting back to the normal day. Everybody was fairly sore and getting on their feet all day. I have no official report, other than the one you have before you. I would like to ask for further consideration on Ordnances 48, 49, 50, and 123.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, we also have with us this evening, our Treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no official report, but I can comment on Dan's staff and how busy they were on tax day, having to pass through the area, and I think they all handled it well, so.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the Mayor's Report to Council for February 2019, the Mayor's Report to Council for March 2019, the Auditor's Expense Report for March 2019, the Auditor's Bank Report for March 2019. We've also received the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Report for March 2019, along with the Auditor's Revenue Report for March 2019. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have minutes for the, we have received the minutes for the April 4, 2019 meeting of the Planning Commission, and we did receive a notice from the Ohio Liquor Control for a transfer of ownership of the C2, C2X liquor permit for Shawway LLC DBA Waltz Carryout, 81 through 83 South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio 43213, to the 4341 East Main LLC DBA East Main Grocery, 4341 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. Those are all the communications, petitions, and claims that we have. At this time, it's, our public hearing is next on the agenda. It is regarding Ordinance 38-2019. It reads, "Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow the Mad Greek to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at 4210 East Broad Street, property owned by Plaza International Properties LLC." I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 38-2019 at this time, and ask that if there is anyone who would like to come forward to speak in favor of Ordinance 38-2019, please do so. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, Mayor, council members, my name is Brian Savage. I own Savage Real Estate, we are property managers, and we manage the properties for Plaza International, Collette Valous, who owns the Mad Greek. We came in front of the council a couple of weeks ago. Joe's not here, so I don't have my wingman with me right now, but Joe Ryan had put together a few documents for us. Basically, the Mad Greek restaurant decades ago used to be Taco Bell and Antigos and, well, it's a drive-through, and the drive-through lane and the windows are all still there. So what Collette's asking you to do is to approve that he can reopen up that window. I don't know if you have the documents in front of you or not. Joe's, again, my wingman here with the electronics, but the drive-through lane is still there. And what was recommended before was that we just restripe it and put in a walkway for pedestrians to get from the parking lot into the restaurant. And we located that. I've talked with Collette about that. So if we can move forward with the restriping and everything else, and if you have any questions?
Questions anymore?
Let me just say, I've always wished they would have had a drive-through, so that's all I'm saying.
Well, he's, you know, Collette's getting very sick. I don't know if you guys have been at the restaurant lately, but you'll notice that he has not been there as often as he has. So he feels that with the drive-through, it's going to help him out and just go order some things like that, so.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward and speak in favor of Ordinance 38-2019? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to Ordinance 38-2019? Okay, well, hearing no one, or seeing no one, no further speakers for pro or con. I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 38-2019 at this time. And I will also call on Ms. Aug to call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation we have listed on the agenda this evening prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
All right, we will now begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. As usual, we will start with our third readings, and we begin with Ordinance 37-2019. It's amending codified ordinance 335.01, driver's license or commercial license required.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 37-2019, move for its adoption.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Kaner for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 37-2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Ordinance 37-2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 38-2019. It's amending zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C1 to allow the Mad Greek to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at 4210 East Broad Street, property owned by Plaza International Properties LLC.
Mr. President, wish to introduce Ordinance 38-2019 and move for the adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Ms. Elmore for the introduction and adoption of Ordinance 38-2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-2019 has been adopted.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good night.
That's the last item we have under third readings. Under second reading, we will start with Ordinance 40-2019. It's amending table of authorized personnel 161.37E and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 40-2019 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Morrison for suspension of all rules on Ordinance 40-2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
The rules had been suspended on Ordinance 40-2019.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 20, 40, I'm sorry, 40-2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Ordinance 40-2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 41-2019. It's amending 161.38 of the codified ordinances to reflect the salary range for analyst supervisor Department of Public Safety and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 41-2019 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 41-2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
The rules had been suspended on Ordinance 41-2019.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 41-2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Ordinance 41-2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 46-2019. It's authorizing and approving an appropriation transfer in the amount of $8,340 from the senior administrative assistant salary account to the data analyst salary account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, like to introduce Ordinance 46-2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 46-2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
The rules had been suspended on Ordinance 46-2019.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of Ordinance 46-2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 46, 2019 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. Under first reading, we start with 40, ordinance 48, 2019. It's repealing ordinance number 43, 2019, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $31,930.89 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund, and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributable to each TIF to the affected vocational school district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund in the amount equal to 100% of the property tax the vocational school district would have received of $31,930.89 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 48, 2019, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 48, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 48, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance 48, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 48, 2019 has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance 49, 2019. It's authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributable to each TIF in the affected vocational school district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund in the amount equal to 100% of the property tax payment the vocational school district would have received of $6,460.23 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 49, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 49, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 49, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance 49, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 49, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 50, 2019. It's creating the account park improvements of... Okay, I gotta back up on this one. This doesn't read as kind of funny, so I'm gonna have to take my time here. Creating the account park improvements, approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of $94,230 from the bond acquisition expense account to the park improvements expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 50, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all the rules on ordinance 50, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 50, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of ordinance 50, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 50, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 51, 2019. It is, it reads transferring $108,538.85 from previously unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Economic Development Incentives Planning Fund, making a supplemental appropriation of $108,538.85 from the Economic Development Incentives Planning Fund to Economic Development Incentives expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 51, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Well, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 51, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance, the rules have been suspended on ordinance 51, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance 51, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 51, 2019 has been adopted. At this time, we do have a add-on piece of legislation. It is ordinance 52, 2019. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with appellate and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 52, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 52, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 52, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance 52, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Ordinance 52, 2019 has been adopted. It's the last ordinance we have under second readings, on our first reading. Under resolutions, we have resolution 20, 2019. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 20, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution 20, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 20, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of resolution 20, 2019. Ms. Alg, please call the roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Resolution 20, 2019 has been adopted. All right, next up, we have resolution 21, 2019. It's approving and making, I'm sorry, let me back up, approving and adopting the Franklin County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency. That resolution is being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we had before us this evening. At this time, it's an opportunity for our second poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you may do so at this time.
He's looking at you. Your honor.
All right, so I see no one, so we will move on to community debate board. Who has something for the community debate board this evening?
Caitlin, I know we had a banner across Yearling Road. Was that for the spaghetti dinner?
Yes.
Twenty-eighth, I guess.
That's twenty-seventh?
Whatever, yeah.
It's, it's, uh...
Sunday, I believe it's twenty...
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth.
Twelve to four. It's the senior center. And that's going to see the AAA?
Yes.
The senior citizens are having a rummage sale two days before that on the 26th and 27th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they're having their rummage sale. Go check them out. Yeah, sometimes you can find some good stuff.
They actually have good, really good stuff.
They have goodies, too.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff, absolutely.
Hot dogs and cookies and all sorts of stuff.